Huh? It would stay like this. Supposed to have over a hundred tomorrow, I think. I've always said that if people actually understood the hail will be hotter in the first half of summer, churches will be full by Sunday morning. Okay, good morning. Seeing it is now a little past ten o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. This is August the eighth, believe it or not. And we're glad to have Ollie with us this morning. It's now our tradition to begin our meetings with an invocation and a pledge. We'll ask if you'd like to join us this morning. If you would, please stand with us. Father, we come to you again grateful that you have allowed us the opportunity to come together to resolve the business of our city. We thank you for our home and the blessings on where we live. I ask that you would be with each one today at this meeting and your just blessings will be upon it. We give you the thanks in Christ's name and pray, amen.
You will join me in the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started this morning, we'll just go through a little housekeeping. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body. All of the cases with the exception of site plans and plaits, and replats, of course, which our decision on those are final. Others will be sent to City Council for our final approval and that will be on their next meeting, Ms. York.
August twenty-first.
There you go, August the twenty-first. So, that being said, we're gonna move into our consent agenda. And are there any, this is gonna be for the minutes from our July the eleventh meeting, since we haven't had meetings since then. Are there any errors, omissions, corrections? Question, comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, who does the petition be approved?
Have a motion to approve. I have a second. I have a second, Mr. Evans. All in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Items for individual consideration, Ms. York.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Item four A, receiver report, hold the discussion and take action on a final plat for lots one through eight, Block A of the H.R. Industrial Park, case number two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven four, F.P. This is the aerial view of the subject property located off of FM fourteen seventeen. This property, kind of, if you recall, some of you may have been on the commission when this came through for annexation and zoning. It was developed, needed water, they annexed, and it is currently zoned light industrial. However, those buildings that you see were built and constructed prior to annexation. This is the proposed final plat. The, one of the main reasons we brought it before the commission for approval today is due to the excessive link, or length, I'm sorry, of Eagle Lane, the road to, on the south portion of the plat. Subdivision ordinance requires that dead-end streets not exceed six hundred feet in length. This one is about a little over nine hundred feet, maybe, maybe about nine fifty, nine thirty, I can't remember exactly. For that reason, staff has brought it before the commission for approval. We have discussed the life and safety measures for that particular road and due to the use and the small density and conversations with the fire marshal and other staff, we feel comfortable moving forward with the length. They may have to provide additional fire hydrants, sprinkle the buildings in order to accommodate that excessive length, however, we are comfortable with it. The proposed plat creates eight lots. It is zoned light industrial. Right now, currently, I believe that the civil engineering plans are being reviewed by Public Works. It's possible that after review of that and with future property owners that the replat may need to take place for fire lanes and other things of that nature. Staff does recommend approval with the condition, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this, currently this plat depicts the right-of-way widths for both Osprey Lane and Eagle Lane at fifty feet. These are not residential streets. Instead, we are categorizing them as minor collectors and therefore we need the sixty-foot right-of-way. Yesterday, we did receive a revision for that appropriate right-of-way width. So, with that, staff does recommend approval as long as we have the sixty-foot right-of-way. And I'm present for any questions, and so is the applicant.
Okay. Three hundred foot, it's not a big deal. I mean, most of the buildings are gonna be metal, they'll be non-provostable buildings and sprinkles, I don't see that as being an issue at all. I don't have a problem with it. Anybody else? Questions, staff? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Well, this is not a public hearing.
You don't want me to speak?
No. You going to anyway?
I'm going to anyway.
My name is David Vilbig, I'm the engineer on the project five seventeen West Woodard. We've been working with staff on this for quite a while because of different ownerships and all. As far as the length of that cul-de-sac, the tract on the back there, the lot will have fire lanes and access easements all through it, and so even though it's a long one, it'll have circulation, probably have to be replatted upon development, final development. We're in the plan review, as she said, and have addressed the initial set of comments and waiting on additional comments. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Vilbig?
This is not a public hearing, so, Mr. Vilbig, next time I will tell you to sit down.
Excuse me?
So, no questions are to be asked at this time.
I told you it wasn't a public hearing. It was not a public hearing. Oh, well, no harm done, we're good. All right, so, seeing, seeing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion now.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we approve the proposed final plat with the condition that the proposed streets meet the right-of-way with requirement of sixty feet for minor collectors.
Second.
Motion with the second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Item five A, which is our public hearing.
All right, be patient with me. Item five A, receiver report, hold the discussion, conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation on a request to rezone the southwest corner of the Katy Memorial Expressway North and Randell Lake Road legally described as H.B. Thomas Survey Abstract Number twelve seventy-two and R.B. Smith Survey Abstract eleven sixty in addition to the City of Denison, GCAT Property ID Number two one nine zero eight eight, from the light industrial and highway-oriented and corridor district to a planned development zoning district to allow for the use of warehouse, mini, self-storage and commercial uses. Case number two thousand twenty-three dash six zero P.D. This is the aerial of the subject property. You have eighty-four to the south, that's Randell Lake Road right there to the east. It is currently zoned light industrial and it is surrounded by agriculture zoning district. Now, I just want to clarify that it is already zoned, this is the existing zoning district for that property. The applicant is proposing a planned development to accommodate the use of warehouse, mini or self-storage, that's the actual use that is in our use regulation chart in our zoning ordinance. Basically, it's a self-storage facility that they are requesting a P.D. for. While this is a use that is allowed in the light industrial zoning district, it is not allowed in the highway overlay or the highway-oriented and corridor district, which does encompass this property. They have proposed development standards, excuse me, for their P.D. to allow for the construction of this use for phase one that's depicted on the proposed lot three on this concept plan here. And for phase two, which is lot one and lot two on the concept plan, they were, they would like to develop them in commercial manners that, with uses that are allowed in a commercial zoning district, but not the uses that are prohibited by the highway overlay. I know that's a little confusing. They are like, they want to maintain the base zoning that is there, the light industrial and the highway-oriented corridor district. The only use that they are requesting be considered allowed is the storage facility for that phase one. Their planned development standards call out that they will maintain all development standards for both the base zoning of light industrial and the highway overlay, and that does include facade requirements. Right now, that highway overlay requires a hundred percent masonry, and they are, that's called out in their standards that all building materials will adhere to that overlay district. Furthermore, they will adhere to landscaping ordinance, the screening requirements, and anything that's called out in chapter two for the subdivision ordinance, which is particular sidewalks of that nature, so. This is a, an example of a previous storage facility that has been constructed, that the applicant has been a part of.
Go back to that photograph, please.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm assuming I'm looking at the front elevation of that building?
Yes, sir.
And it's not a hundred percent masonry?
This is just an example of what they...
No, what I'm getting at is, in my opinion, if that building was a hundred percent masonry, it wouldn't be nearly as interesting as this one is.
I, I, I can appreciate that comment. When they come through for a site plan, they'll provide their elevations and this commission will be the...
Would you run a variance to that?
There's not a variance to that, it's not a hardship. They could come through and ask the commission to consider a percentage of materials outside of the masonry when they come through for a site plan, but right now with their P.D. calling for a hundred percent masonry, I don't know if the commission could make that consideration. If that is something that we need to discuss once I finish my case, we definitely can.
I mean, it's up to them. If they want to do a hundred percent masonry, that's, that's fine with me, I'm not opposed to that. It's just, I've always had a problem with this hundred percent thing because it's boring, for lack of a better term, it's just boring. I mean, the building's just become...
Well, it's only boring depending on the architect.
That's true to a point, but not totally true to a point. And, you know, to me, what they've done here, it's the combination of, of the materials is what makes the building stand out. Otherwise, we're just gonna get a masonry box.
Well, it's definitely something that staff and the applicant can discuss before it goes to council. If that is something that the applicant would like to look into, right now, when I've had discussions with them, they've been very accommodating, very easy to work with, but my recommendation, coming before this commission and then also City Council based off of previous highway overlay rezonings that have come before them, I just recommended that they adhere to the highway overlay district.
That's fine.
So, on the, I wasn't here when they created the highway overlay, so was the, maybe you know the history, was there a reason that they did not include warehouse for that overlay district?
So, actually, this particular use was removed with a previous director's recommendations. There was a list of uses that were prohibited based off an ordinance change that he brought before the commission and council at that time, and a lot of them were industrial uses that you may not want to see, so a lot of them, even I can admit, are, should be prohibited from the highway overlay. This one in particular, if done correctly and if it adheres to the standards called out in the highway overlay, it can, it can kind of look just like any other commercial building.
So, is your intent to include it now in the highway overlay?
We have not had those discussions. It may be something that we look to do in the future. This is the first applicant that's come forward wanting to utilize, that has actually made a submittal, that's wanting to utilize this mini warehouse storage, so.
Yeah, I, just having, having just worked in different cities, I always kind of struggle with that being one of the first things you see as you enter the city was the warehouses. Although the picture of the one you showed is, you know, it's, it's an attractive, more attractive to it, but I still think I struggle with seeing that use, the first thing I'm coming to.
Sure. One of the main, one of, not a main reason, but another good aspect of their concept plan is it is one of the ones, it is one of the lots that is tucked back more on the property, rather than it being more front-facing. When we had a pre-application meeting with these individuals, that was something that was mentioned and they kind of listened to that advice or that guidance that staff provided. And the other two lots that are proposed on the concept plan will be the more commercial-type buildings that you would see. I hadn't quite finished, but I think that we've kind of circled around everything that I would have said anyways, so, staff is recommending approval of the request, and I am present for any more questions that you may have. The applicant is here as well. I will say that the future land use plan does detail this section of seventy-five as a mixed commercial, to be utilized in a mixed commercial manner, and industrial, warehouse, commercial, all of those fall under the definition of the mixed commercial type found in the comprehensive plan, so this does conform with the comprehensive plan. And just to reiterate, it is already zoned light industrial. With the highway overlay, both of those zoning districts will remain intact with the proposed P.D. The only deviation from either of those or from the highway overlay in particular is the use itself.
Okay. Any other questions, staff? Okay, I have two speakers cards here. I'm not even gonna attempt the name, I would butcher it. This, I'm assuming you're the applicant. Ozil or Brandon? It's not Brandon.
Okay. May I kick it off?
Sure, sure.
All right.
Just give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Brandon Middleton with Kimley Horn, eight zero one Cherry Street in Fort Worth. So, I'm the civil engineer on the, on the site. I think Diane did a great job of kind of summarizing our request to the commission. I will note, and I've walked the property, there's about sixty-five feet of fall between the frontage road and Randell Lake Road, so that, that self-storage use will be kind of tucked away and kind of lower than the primary uses along the frontage and the exterior. So, I'm here to answer any questions. And then Ozil, can I answer any questions about building facade? We tend to agree with you, Chairman, that we would like to have something other than masonry, but we're happy to kind of come back at an appropriate time when you consider the site plan and we'll show you more detailed elevations of what we'd like to do.
Okay. Any questions?
Is the self-storage, was it just, was it one building?
It's one building.
Just one building and it's all in?
Correct.
In interior storage, basically?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Is this going to be climate controlled?
Typically, yes, yeah. I just wanted to make sure.
I need name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Ozil Vigil, nineteen oh three Paco Drive, Arlington, Texas, here with the developer and also Reliable Commercial Construction. So, we've been in a lot of new projects that we've developed and in new self-storage, right, it's a different product than what we had twenty years ago. We've been a part of different projects in the vicinity. We're building one in Anna, Texas, on White and Ferguson. That one's about ninety percent complete, and it's a similar spec to what is being prescribed for this site. And we've also broken into, you know, cities that are growing, such as Denison. For example, in Salina or in Prosper, we've built out, you know, a hundred percent, you know, climate-controlled self-storage facilities, and those have actually become more of a benchmark for those cities, right? Because just the high quality of the development and, and how Diane referred to our site plan, it is designed to where, it's screened by the commercial users up front and it's more in the back and Brendan mentioned, the site does have some hurdles and some challenges to it as well. The commercial development is poised to take off as soon as, you know, in phase two, as soon as more of the infrastructure is put in place through, you know, the self-storage project. So, yeah, it is all climate-controlled facility, it's gonna, the exteriors will be similar to what we have presented, and we'll work, you know, with staff and with council on any additional requirements that, you know, you should see fit.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Come on.
There's a rather long expanse that's on the road and then a shorter expanse, the perpendicular expanse. Given the sort of conceptual to what it might look with materials, how it might look with finished materials, which one of those facades would have the more industrial materials and which would have, which would have the ones that we would consider the more front entry or predominant architectural features?
Sure. We would aim to have four-sided architecture on, you know, on Randell Lake, on seventy-five, and just a nice mix all the way around. There's also ideas of, you know, creating bumpouts and articulation on all four sites. So, that's what we mainly aim to do and to complete on all the projects that we're involved with.
Question, staff, do we have horizontal and vertical articulation requirements in our ordinance now?
Not that I'm aware of. There are some architectural standards that are in the highway overlay, I don't know what those are off the top of my head, though.
Any other questions?
So, just out of curiosity, the, the requirements for this overlay district versus the traditional ordinance that we have in place, is there a reason why we just don't adopt the overlay district architectural standards, just as if that's what we really want? Because I, I really struggle with making all these different P.D.s because from an enforcement perspective, it's really difficult to have to research every specific P.D. to each, you know, property.
We agree with you. We just, at the point, right now, we don't have the staff or the time to, to dive into those ordinances and make those changes. Please know that those are things that we are aware of and we are, you know, trying to find a way to work through, but unfortunately, right now, in order to accommodate commercial development in some manners, the P.D. is the only way to go.
Yeah, I, I struggle with that. I, I would make that a top priority, especially with the growth coming into Denison. I mean, that should be the fourth priority, make sure that the standards that were coming here are the ones we want, not just, because, you know, I feel like there might be some development that might slip through the crack and not be able to comply, you know, but if everyone just knows upfront the point of the field, then we'll know exactly what we're doing.
And I, I do appreciate that, but that is something, like I said, we're just a staff of three, so we, we, we are aware of the gap there and we are working towards it, but we also have pre-application meetings and it's something that Ozil and I discussed in that pre-application meeting, so he walked in knowing what, in order to achieve his goals, what, what he would have to do, so.
And, and we are, those issues are gonna be addressed and it will be soon, I'll just tell you that. We're gonna look, it's my understanding, it's my understanding we're gonna look at all of our horizontal districts, is that correct?
Yes.
So, everything's fixed and we look at it. I have one more speaker card here, Karen?
Oh, that's the next case?
Oh, that's for...
They're not here, they just come in there.
Oh, they're not here? Okay, that's the next case?
I'm sorry, it's the same case, it's just for...
Okay, they're absent too. Oh, yeah, she lives in Florence, Alabama. Probably the reason she's not here this morning. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just have one more comment, and I'm sorry, I didn't make it during my presentation. Right now, the concept plan does depict access to Randell Lake Road. If that access is to remain, Randell Lake Road, I don't know if you've driven down it, you should, it's in very, very poor condition, and that's being nice. If those access, or points of access, excuse me, will remain on that road, then the applicant will likely have to do upgrades to Randell Lake. I know that that might be a question that you were thinking or citizens might be thinking of, so I just wanted to clarify. This is just the zoning portion, there are several other applications they'll have to make, preliminary plat, civil, site plan, et cetera, so.
Is the applicant aware of the fact that they may have to...
It was something that we discussed in the pre-app meeting.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak on this request? Yes, ma'am, come on. Name and address for the record, please.
Cheryl McKee, three two two zero Randell Lake Road. Can you hear me? I couldn't hear any of you guys, so it's okay. I, my family has lived there sixty years. I'm right across the street from one of them, I've already seen the surveyors going on over there, and I talked to the neighbors, we're all, our little acres apart from each other, and yes, we don't want to look like Wanita Drive, we don't want to look like eighty-four where you have so many warehouses, and it's not attractive. And I was telling Diana that I, one of my majors is a master's in art education, so what I'm trying to say is, to watch it go down, and I know you were talking about making the buildings look better, and I didn't understand where the openings are, are they on Randell Lake Road, are they over there on the side road of seventy-five or Katy Memorial? I just, I need you, and I'm speaking for the several people here, to be careful, at least, at least don't make it look like an industrial park. Even when I was going down ninety-one today, I looked over that bridge after the high school, and we just don't want it to look like them. Thank you. Our questions.
I think that if you saw a photograph of the building...
I saw that building.
If you notice, that building has windows in it, it has glass doors, I think the appearance of what they're proposing is gonna look more like an office building and not like a warehouse.
Okay, that's one. You are, you open it up, are you gonna watch everybody who builds there? Because one of them said, a storage facility, are we talking about where you go in and store your stuff and the next person goes in? There's one on ninety-one, look at it.
You're talking about the typical where there's...
So, I'm saying...
...glass doors and...
Yeah, I, well, and I see that, and that's fairly attractive, and it wouldn't look like you're industrial, that you're letting come on eighty-four everywhere.
All right, so, let me clarify so that you don't think that we're up here not paying attention to what citizens are saying.
I could barely hear you guys back here, so I don't know what all you said.
Is my mic on? Okay.
Except you, I could hear you, oh, you look good.
So, the zoning is put into place, okay, and if the applicant is building a use that is approved in that zoning, okay, and complies with the design criteria of that zoning, they're not here. They go strictly, straight to the city for a building permit. They bypass us because they're complying, okay? So, what I'm, what I'm trying to tell you is that the use that we're talking about today has a specific use and it's not allowed for the zoning, so we're, we're talking about how we're, you know, whether or not we want to change that to allow this use.
Exactly.
What I tell citizens is that when you're looking at the project itself, you pick the lesser of the evils, for a lack of a better term, okay?
I buy that one.
Huh?
I buy it, I hear which then.
And so, but if, if, for example, it's light, it's light industrial zoning, so if they comply with that zoning, they don't even come to see us, you know? So, that's what I'm saying, if you have the opportunity to get something like this that's gonna look more like a, a nice, attractive office building on that particular piece of property versus a use that's approved in the zoning that might not be as, as nice when they get finished, you understand what I'm saying? So, we can protect in a case like this where this P.D.'s coming in, we do have some, some authority, we do have some, some protection methods there that we don't necessarily have if they comply with zoning that's already in place. So... So, in this particular case, I think we're, we're doing you a benefit because we can actually be a little bit more restrictive with what they're trying to do, and that's gonna make it better for you living close to it.
See, I don't know if I agree with that, though, because there's already an overlay district right now that is protecting the citizens by prohibiting warehouse.
But, Michael, if they comply with that zoning district.
Right.
Okay, it's light industrial.
Right.
Okay? Now, the design criteria says it has to be a hundred percent masonry that faces the street.
Yeah.
Okay? That's the design criteria. But if that use complies with that, then they don't come to see us. They go straight for a building permit.
No, it's straight zoning.
What I'm trying to say is, this particular structure, this particular building is a little bit different because it is a PD, because we do have a little bit of a say-so in what's getting built there. So, this building, we can require more than we could if they were just complying with it.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be here today if they were in complete compliance. They're coming here because they want something that our overlay district doesn't allow.
It's just a use.
Right.
It's just a use, but we're doing a PD, and it's a completely different animal, in my way of thinking, than if it's straight zoning.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Well, it's because we have more authority.
No, we have more control with a PD.
No, exactly.
Right.
That's what we're talking about today.
Right, but it's.
What I'm trying to make her understand is, if it's a straight use and it is no PD involved.
Right.
She could get a lesser attractive product on the ground that she has to look at on a daily basis.
Right, which is why I was saying, if the overlay district is that type of architecture and requirements.
But we can't change the overlay district today.
No.
That's, we're, we've got to decide today whether or not this is gonna work.
Yeah.
We have to move on.
Which is why I would make my decision with that.
The council will have to, that's gonna be in the future. So, today, on August the eighth, we can do more with this case to protect her as a property owner than we can if it was a straight zoning case.
Correct.
So, I hope it made sense to you, because we are concerned about the built community.
I need to hear that.
We are concerned about that.
Okay.
We are protective of our overlay district on the highway because that's all we have. And we want to make sure that when it's built out, it's not a hodgepodge like a friend of ours to the south, okay? And so, we're, we're trying to be protective. And I have a little bit of disagreement with, with my fellow commissioner on, on PDs, because I do feel like we do have more control, and the state has removed a lot of control that the city has. That overlay district out there is one of two left in the city that we actually have some control over on that highway. That's it. And so, we are, we are concerned about it. So, you don't think we're not, okay? We, we are concerned about you, you as a property owner and your rights and, and values. So, but I think in this particular situation, I think we can do you justice by what we're doing here today.
If I may also, it is an indoor storage facility, so I, I think that that might have been lost in the communication.
It is my what?
It's an indoor, like an indoor storage facility. So, that building right there, all inside of it is storage.
That's the storage.
Yes, ma'am. So, it's not your typical, which you might see on Morton Street.
Probably the one right across from my house, then.
You don't see all the garage doors facing.
It'll, it'll be more of a building than it is individual garages. Where they come up outside, they pull up, get their stuff out of the garage, put it in their truck and drive off. They'll walk in and get their items.
See, because you're gonna have across the street homes. We're all, been there years, and to watch it go tacky. So, they've all asked me to speak, so.
Well, I don't know that I would use the word tacky.
Because they could build basically a similar building or something like that for a light industrial use, and like I said, it would be an obvious.
The highway overlay requirements of design standards, which are a lot more intensive than any other, or the base zoning districts all around the city, because we want to protect that integrity of the highway. We want it to look attractive as you're driving through Denison. And so, with that overlay district that exists, it will still exist with the zoning case that's here today. The only difference is, is it's allowing for a storage facility. It's a use that is very much needed within the city. All of our storage facilities are over capacity. However, being built where it's being built, it has to adhere to a higher standard. So, it may not look just like that, it may look, you know, different, but it will be, it will be built to the highway overlay.
It won't look like Eighty-Four and Waneda.
It should not, no, ma'am. And there will be, as I mentioned, there will be landscaping standards that are required.
Also, you might consider trees.
Those are a part of the landscaping requirements.
That's gonna be an important.
I mean, we're full of our little coyotes and bobcats, and I hate to see all them loose or hung.
If you will, look at that building right there. Now, one of the things that the applicant said that, that I caught, and, and you should be glad that he said it, is he mentioned the word articulation. So, if you look at that building, you can see where the blue section juts out away from the wall, how it steps out like that, and you see how it's taller than the other part of the building? In most industrial districts, the metal buildings are just a tilt-wall building, they're just boxes.
That's all you see.
Okay? But the articulation he's talking about are those offsets, whether they be horizontal, which is stepping out away from the wall, or vertical, where it's going higher in different, different places. So, he made the statement that they're looking at doing articulation and architectural elements on all four sides of the building, which by ordinance is only required, I think, on the roadways. So, we could actually put metal on the sides that don't face the street, correct?
I don't, in the overlay, it's a hundred percent masonry.
It's over a hundred percent masonry, no? But I thought it was only on the street sides.
Not, that's not how it's called out in the ordinance.
A hundred percent, the whole building?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I thought it was only, only on the street. Because we have some buildings that aren't, that we've granted.
We do, we do.
Yeah, so we have. But they're talking about all four sides being architectural, not just the street sides. So, the product they're coming with is gonna be a benefit to you as to what it could be.
I was impressed when I was listening to them.
Any other questions, Speaker? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for listening.
You betcha.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, and because it was discussed in this meeting, I just want to make sure that there is some clarification on the PD itself. If the PD states, so you already have the highway overlay that states that it's a hundred percent masonry. The PD also states that it's a hundred percent masonry. There are no deviations from a PD. So, if there is something that the applicant or that the commission wants to discuss as it comes to materials, that may be something that needs to be a part of the recommendation, because when this goes to council, this PD will be adopted as it is. And when the site plan comes before the commission, no deviations will be allowed. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Once more, thank you for your time. And to that point, what we've done in the past is a, a mix of eighty percent, eighty to twenty, so eighty percent masonry. That could be stucco, brick, stone, all the way around the building, and then twenty percent accent material. So, nowadays, metal has just, you know, expanded the selection, and it's high quality, it doesn't look cheap, and twenty percent usually, you know, gives us enough latitude, right, to, to make the interesting facades and, and work now. That's, the windows and glass and doors are netted out of that percentage typically, right? So, you'll have, you know, full windows, fake windows, you know, for example, we'll have our entry doors and some display windows to give it the office appearance. We've probably been one of the, the most active developers that are, you know, busy with fake windows all the way around, and that just breaks up the facade. But eighty to twenty has been a, a pretty good mix for us.
So, let's, let's clarify something. Right now, the ordinance says a hundred percent, okay? So, we can add to, but we can't take away. So, we can't address that today, correct?
It can be a recommendation that you want to make to city council, your opinion of the, the materials, or the percentage that's called out for the type of materials that are used. It's definitely something that you can put in as a recommendation. But right now, where the commission has the ability to make slight deviations for a site plan in the highway overlay, when they come forward to you, you have the highway overlay, and then you have a PD on top of it. And so, there is no deviation from that PD. So, if that is something that the commission desires, is to see different materials rather than the hundred percent masonry, that might be something you want to make a recommendation towards the city council, if the applicant is comfortable with that. The applicant wants to remain with the hundred percent masonry outside of the typical areas that you would see the metal materials being used, then we'll leave it as is.
How did, how did we handle Classic Chevrolet?
They made a PD for that material.
Which is all Lucabond.
They, they came before the commission. It was a recommendation from a previous director to come forward with a PD to allow for the aluminum-clad metal panel system.
And, and, that's a requirement by General Motors, by the way. And it's more expensive than brick, I might add.
It's expensive, yeah.
You know, just because it's metal doesn't mean it's cheap.
Correct.
And I'm not arguing that. I just want to make sure that when you get to council, or when we leave here, that we have a clear understanding of how to move forward. I have a clear understanding of how to move forward, and that it, I'm not, I'm making sure that the commission is being heard and that the applicant is in agreement with that.
The commission would probably be more comfortable with a percentage thing if we had something to look at.
Exactly. Do you mean an elevation?
Yeah, some sort of conceptual elevation that we could look at what they're proposing.
That is something that's lacking, but when it comes to what the PD stands for, stands for right now, a hundred percent masonry, it's kind of, it was, from a staff perspective, not irrelevant to provide you an elevation, but it wasn't something I asked for since they were abiding by the highway overlay.
So, if we vote on it today as it is, then it's gonna be the hundred percent, it's gonna go to council, and that's where the PD's gonna be. So, you can't come back in and say, well, we're doing eighty-twenty. What, could we, could we table it and let them come back in a month and, and we look at it?
I would, my, I would ask them if they're comfortable even changing the PD as it is. If they are, that's a, that's something that we can definitely do. If they would rather move forward with the PD as it is, I can make the comment to council that the commission felt that there needed to be a breakup in materials.
Could not the motion be structured in such a way, and maybe I'm not understanding, Mr. Chair, the difference in one nomenclature or the other, but we're making a recommendation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Why couldn't the recommendation, since the applicant has appeared to be quite amenable to the process all along, and looks like will continue to be, is there a way to incorporate in the recommended motion flexibility, potential flexibility in the continuing process of planning the building until the commission can see proposed elevations with materials? Or is that taking it too far down the road?
I think that's a lot of what-if there is.
Okay, so where do we get to there without an imperative that none of us have any impact on later, including the developer?
Well, the recommendation.
Recommend the council consider.
They decide whether it's eighty, twenty, or a hundred.
Sure, I, you can, you can recommend approval, denial, whatever it is that you, make a recommendation with a condition or a consideration, asking council to consider a breakup in materials. And if you want to add a percentage to that, and the applicant is comfortable with that, then that is how I would move forward with the recommendation. And I can also amend my staff report to reflect that consideration that you're requesting, and then I will also mention it at the public hearing.
Okay, well, my personal opinion, coming from what I do, is I'm comfortable with an eighty-twenty ratio to give us, give us some, a little bit more creativity and creativity of the architect.
Sure. No, and, and to add to that, Mr. Chairman, we're comfortable either way. We would like to, you know, structure it in a way that we can move forward to council, and we're comfortable with, PNZ's comfortable with, and also city council as well, taking them into consideration as well.
I think we're all in agreement that we can make the recommendation if, if the commission chooses to go that route.
Sure.
I'm not sure they will.
Understood.
But if the commission chooses to go in an eighty-twenty, we'll send that recommendation to council. They can decide, or they may, they say, no, we won't.
Take it or leave it, right?
Okay.
Okay.
That work?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak on this request? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we probably need to take a minute for discussion among the commission. I'm, I'm comfortable with an eighty-twenty, personally. Linda?
Thank you. We've already discussed in the recommended motion a condition, so it seems about the street length. So, it seems to me we can structure it in such a way that we broadly define the additional condition, and I guess that's, I'm only talking about the semantics of the motion, Chair.
Brett? I'm comfortable with the, with the eighty-twenty, just to give a little bit of architecture, you know, architectural breakup. Like I said, a hundred percent masonry doesn't give a lot, and obviously you can change between brick and stucco or something, or stone and stucco, but, you know, it's still, you know, for your accent piece, twenty percent is more just almost an accent, not, it's not a primary, so.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm, I would be okay with, you know, eighty percent.
Okay.
You know, or eight, probably nothing, not lower than eighty percent, but eighty percent or above.
And that would be on all four elevations?
Correct.
Okay, yes. My?
I'm not. I prefer to stay with the one hundred percent. I mean, if you're a good architect, you can do your articulation with the hundred percent that's been done before. You know, there's a reason they put a hundred percent in there, so I'm gonna stick with the original request.
I'm not sure the reason's good.
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay, so you're at a hundred percent.
Yeah, and mostly because of just my experience with the enforcement issues of, you know, the non-masonry materials. There tends to be a bigger issue with, you know, maintaining the, the structures that aren't the masonry, and so.
Okay.
I'm okay with eighty-twenty.
Okay. All right, so, I'm gonna entertain a motion. A question for staff, in your comments that you're gonna make to the council.
Mm-hmm.
Can you address that the applicant has voluntarily agreed to horizontal and vertical articulation, which is not a requirement in the ordinance, but that they have, because I think that goes a long way in what they're trying to do architecturally with the building. So, I think that should be something the council should be aware of.
Understood.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the request to rezone the subject property from light industrial and the highway-oriented and corridor district to a planned development overlay to allow for the use of warehouse mini slash self-storage and commercial uses, and also have council consider the request to lower the masonry requirement from one hundred percent down to as low as eighty percent. Is that?
Does that work?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Uh, next thing on our staff updates.
No, sir. One more case.
Oh, we got one more?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we gotta replat it, I'm sorry. Hold it down. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a replat of Lot One, Block A of the England Estates, creating Lot One R and Lot Two R, Block A, case number twenty twenty-three dash zero seven-three RP. This is a aerial view of the subject property. England Estates is located south of Middle Road. This property is located within Denison's ETJ, and this is the proposed replat. Both lots meet the Grayson County requirements, a minimum of one acre to accommodate a septic The proposed plat creates two lots. As I mentioned, it's located in the ETJ, and it meets all the minimum standards for Grayson County, and staff does recommend approval of the proposed replat. And I'm present for any questions that you.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, anyone here to speak on behalf of this request? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I moved to.
I did?
I went to close the public.
I did.
Oh, thank you for the promotion.
I moved to, I moved to approve the proposed replat.
Okay. Have a motion? I second. Have a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, staff updates now.
Uh, staff does not have any updates, sir.
No updates?
Nothing.
What happened?
Sir.
We're disappointed.
Sorry.
Nothing going on?
No.
All right, seeing no other business coming before the commission, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Have one, Mr. Potter, the next, need a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned.